She's our second deputy clerk.
Oh, hi.
Hi.
Where's my desk?
We're three deep today.
It's a little emergency.
Two deep with the final board. The live stream is going to start any second.
Okay, I think we'll call this meeting to order. Item number B, blessing land acknowledgement of Councilor Van Valen.
As we gather, we recognize that we are on Treaty III lands, which are steep and rich in indigenous history and home to many First Nations and Métis people today. We continue to be thankful for the partnerships with Indigenous people. We give thanks for the many blessings we enjoy in the city of Canora. We seek wisdom in our minds, clearness in our thinking, truth in our speaking, and always love in our hearts so that we may try always to unite the citizens of Canora. Let these principles guide us in our decision-making.
Thank you. Item number C, public information notices there are not. Item D, declaration of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. If there's any member of council who has any declarations of pecuniary interest in the nature thereof pertaining to any items as follows on today's agenda from a meeting at which a member was not in attendance, see none. Moving on the agenda, under subject, item number one, education training members of council. We have three items on there today, so who is going to lead with leading documents review?
Sure, I'll go first. So, we're going to start, Mayor Council, we're going to start at the top with the strategic plan. So this presentation was cobbled together through a couple of different presentations that we had with our consultant, so it's scanned in, so it looks a little different, but hopefully it should hold up pretty good, so slightly. So these were the broader objectives that we set out for as part of the strategic plan process. So it was very important to us to align with real community needs and priorities, and we did that by going through an extensive engagement process, which we can get into more a little bit further on. I sit within the parameters of the city's responsibility as an organization, so we talked a lot about what was our mandate versus other groups' mandates, such as the KDSB, OPP, et cetera. We wanted something that was tangible, practical, and measurable, and I'll give an example of that when we get a little bit further in. Be realistic within the human and fiscal capacity of the city of Canora. We wanted to create collaboration through the organization, and we wanted to create a sense of self-ownership over the document. Anytime you're trying to do a strap plan type of project, it's always challenging to try and, you know, get that self-ownership right through the organization down to the front lines. And so we tried to make sure that the staff were very involved throughout the engagement process. Next, please, Dan. A little bit of repetition here, but these were the project objectives we had in working with the third-party consultant. Again, making sure the community priorities were articulated, creating an effective guide for council and staff in decision-making and resource allocation. So when we're sitting down and we're making decisions at the budget table, for example, if something is in the strap plan versus not in the strap plan, is that sort of a harbinger for what we decide to do? Establishing realistic goals, again, measurability, creating collaboration, and creating robust engagement with council, staff, stakeholders, and the broader community. So those were the project objectives with the consultant. And the next slide, please, Dan. And so just a bit of a pyramid here, just to give you a sense for the hierarchy of the strap plan. So the strap plan kind of comes at the very top. We filter everything through there to sort of help us with our decision-making. And then Jeff Port spoke last week about the official plan. That comes in sort of on the next rung. And then we've got our supplementary plans, strategies, policies, and bylaws. And then SLT are going to provide some updates on a number of our important, what we call directional plans, you know, parks and recreation, or economic development and tourism, those types of things, that's sort of the next rung. And then our department work plans. So that's the typical planning that we would be doing every year with our teams. And we also do have a departmental work planning component as part of this project that we're still working towards. And then finally, the operating and capital budgets. And so that's sort of where administration looks for guidance on how we're making our decisions and what we're choosing to prioritize as we go along. Is that clear? Any questions, Robert? The planning process that we used for the project, really quick. So everybody has a strap plan on their desk. So that's the plan itself, not the presentation. The presentation will be uploaded on SharePoint. So I'm going to go pretty high level on the planning process, but in essence, you know, step one, stage seven. We start up meetings, we did some background research, we looked at our previous strap plans, and we built awareness around the project in the community. The second phase we went into was connecting and collaborating. That's where we launched a website, we started the community survey, we held a number of stakeholder meetings, we did some pop-up booths in the community. You might have seen that either the Main Street Market or some other gatherings even around the city. And we did both council and staff workshops. Then we went to the creating stage. That's where we established our vision, mission, and value statements, determined our strategic focus areas and goals. Again, more staff workshops and working sessions, and just refinement around some of the things that we heard initially. And then finally, with reviewing and finalizing, we created the final document, more council and staff workshops, and then put it to council for final review. And that was under the spirit of 2022 Council Board.
Cal, just wondering, what was the name of that consultant? And you mentioned just doing research and looking to other communities. Were there any communities in particular that we sort of crafted this around? Or we used as a main influence?
Yeah, no, so we went through a thorough procurement process, and we selected Urban Systems Limited out of Winnipeg, and they were the consultant that we worked with on this project. You know, we really tried to make this made in Canora. We did look, you know, at some municipalities to see what best practices were, again, you know, for things like measurability. That was, I don't know, really important to the group. And I'll give you an example of that when we get into the meat and bones of the project itself. Is that?
Yep, that's fine.
Next, please, thank you. So a little bit of background on the community engagement. So we had over a thousand people respond, and there's actually more responses because there was quite a few questions. So everybody responded, you know, I think to, there was over 100 questions in there. So we had a lot of material and information that sort of informed the plan. And I put just a couple of things here. The community's top six priorities, and there's another slide that illustrates this a little bit later, and I don't think these would come as a surprise to anybody. Community safety and crime, housing, access to healthcare, social conditions, local economy and employment, community growth and development. So, you know, I think, again, the public and what we heard in the engagement process was pretty consistent with what we've been hearing over the last year and a half, two years. What is Canora doing well? Fire protection, number one. Water and sewer services, garbage services, general customer services, police services, recreation. So those were all combined at a rate of good with excellent. So that's something, you know, just to give you a sense for what people thought we were doing well. And what is the city most improved over the last five years? City communications, museum, quality of the city website, sidewalks, roads, parks, and open spaces. So those are just survey results. I'm not sure COVID anything there, but those actually really are the survey results. Community engagement, so there's just some comments here, and these are actually in the strap plan themselves too. Just some really positive comments about the community. I won't spend too much time there. And then when it comes to priorities, this is just a graphical representation of those top six that I shared with you earlier. So you see sort of the top four or five. We had, you know, 45% or above of the community identified those as priorities. And then as we get a little bit further down, we see a few other things. Cultural awareness, respect, and inclusion, parks and recreation, environment and climate change, COVID recovery, access to education, communication, transportation, you know, general government services. So that's just a little bit of information for you about what was important to the residents from the early survey. And municipal roles and responsibilities. And we did this graphic. I'm not sure if the new council has found this in their experience so far, but there is. There are some, there is some lack of clarity out in the community about what falls in the city's bucket, what might fall in other organizations' buckets. So we came up, we worked with the consultant to come up with this kind of graph to try and articulate sort of, you know, what was in our bucket and what was outside. Not to say that there is an opportunity for collaboration, and we kind of tried to reflect that. In the middle there, you kind of see community safety, housing policy and development attraction, environmental stewardship, those were sort of things that we saw as being the city, as well as other organizations. So that was just to try and a helpful visual aid for individuals trying to figure out sort of who they need to reach out to or what the city's responsible for. Next, that's in the strap plan itself. This is a chart that we put in there just to give a sense. You know, it's the city funding commitments to external organizations. It's something that comes up every budget cycle. It's something that comes up in our conversations with residents regularly. I understand from, you know, people that have sat on council before that it's something that comes up in their conversations with residents on a regular basis. So we just wanted to provide a visual representation of how much of the city's budget is directed to these six or seven external agencies or services. So just to give you a sense, we brought in about 28 million last year in property tax revenue, and you'll see 12.356 million going to those external organizations. So it's pretty significant. The next slide, and we'll have lots more time to get into that around budget time. Thank you. So here is our mission, vision, and, or this is our value slide, sorry. So we did a little bit of tweaking relative to the previous strap plan from 2015, but not much. So we just tidied up some wording. I remember, I think, when Henry Wall was up here talking about KDSB, one of the councilors sort of said, you know, are you meeting those values? Are you living up to those values? And we as well, you know, we try to live these every day. And these are the conversations that we're having at SLT. We really try to use these as a filter for the decisions that we're making. I'm not going to go into too much detail, just high level. You know, collaboration, communication, customer service, environmental sustainability, fiscal responsibility, innovation readiness, and trust and respect. So I think that is self-explanatory, but let me know if you have any questions. And then the focus areas. So this is really the meat and potatoes of the strap plan itself. And these were the five focus areas we identified. Infrastructure and environment, tourism, economic growth and development, community recreation, well-being and safety, service delivery and organizational capacity, and relations with treaty partners. Those were the five overarching areas that we identified. And so I am going to go through this at a high level of detail just to give council a sense for what we saw as priorities and identified. So the goals are just right here, sort of in the middle. And these are sort of more broad and general, and provide a lot of flexibility for us to think about the projects that we're identifying or the things that we're identifying to include in our work plans. So, you know, as an example, position Canora for growth through proactive infrastructure planning. So that's broad in general, it's not as specific. So, you know, if you're a frontline staff member, for example, you could see how the work that you're doing, depending on your area, fits into one of these goal buckets, so to speak. And it was really important to the team and I that we went one step further behind just sort of, you know, broad, general goals to really have action items that were measurable, that, you know, not necessarily binary, like yes, we did it, or no, we didn't do it. But at least we could say, you know, here are the four things that we did to contribute to achieving that action item. So that's sort of the logic, and that's where I'm talking about the measurability there. So complete long-term master plan for city infrastructure. Water and sewer, transportation and roads, stormwater. Also, infrastructure and servicing standards was identified through the Development Services Department. So remember what I told you? We were talking about the rural road study last week and the issues that we found particularly north of the bypass with regards to the flooding. Just pointing back to, you know, before we had any flooding, the city had identified infrastructure planning, you know, citywide for transportation. And so I just want to just underline again that we've seen that as a long-term goal that the city needs to achieve. And one thing that I'll say, because as we go through this, you're going to see a fair number of plans, okay? And the reason that that's important is because, and I've talked a lot with the group of, we want to move, you know, sometimes in this job, you know, flood, you know, you're reacting, forest fires, COVID, election, and, you know, there's a lot of things getting thrown at us, you know, big snowstorms. And sometimes it's hard to, you know, it's hard to step out of that day-to-day and keep the focus on the long term. So it was really important to us to just try and continue to come back to that guiding star where possible. I had another point I was going to make there, sorry, I lost it. Hopefully it'll come back to me. But the planning, sorry, proactive versus reactive was the point that I wanted to make. If you have a plan and you have something that you're trying to hold yourself to, and you have something that you're working towards, that lends itself to more proactivity. And so we're trying as much as possible to control, you know, being in that reactive space. And in this particular line of work, you know, similar to others, it can just be hard sometimes to keep focused. So that's why the plans are important to us in this document.
What's the saying, everyone has a plan until they get hit?
Yeah.
That's exactly what's, we've been hit so many times over the last couple of years here, so.
Yeah, no, for sure. And so you can think about, you know, the challenges that Marco has in his area trying to care for the infrastructure, and then all of a sudden you go through a big sweep and flood, and you're like, okay, the priorities just changed. So at the very least, with these types of guiding documents that you're going to see scattered throughout the presentation here, at least we have something that we can come back to and say, is this still where we want to be in five or 10 years, right? And the servicing standards, you know, we've talked a lot in this room about development friendly and wanting to make this an environment where people want to come in and build. Part of that is consistency and understanding the rules of the game from the hop. And one of the challenges that we do have in Canora is everything's a little bit unique. So you might be building on a hill, there might be some bedrock. But we wanted to try and get some, you know, even if it's consistent standards in different parts of the city, we wanted to try to provide that consistency. So again, when a developer walks through the door or residents trying to build, what are the expectations? And so if they know how high are the curbs, how far apart do the streetlights need to be, where do we need to have a fire hydrant, what sizing of water and sewer pipe do we need? That provides clarity, and so that's really important. Stormwater financing study. So our water and our sewer, those are self-funded utilities. So the only way that we fund those is through water and sewer rates from people that actually have water and sewer services. So that's the way that we generate revenue for water and sewer. For stormwater, we don't have that same system, so that all comes out of the property tax. And, you know, Marco talked a little bit last week in his presentation on infrastructure about the challenges that we are seeing with stormwater, the challenges that we are seeing with more regular, you know, kind of those one-in-a-hundred or one-in-50-year storms, we're seeing those kind of more regularly. So we're just trying to figure out what the best way to finance stormwater moving forward is. Three, five, and 10-year capital plans, just trying to really dig in with our new asset management plan. And look, again, there's going to be some change, but we want to have sort of a framework. And we want to be able to provide clarity to council and, you know, even to the public about, you know, what is sort of coming over the next three, five, 10 years. Not to say that things are going to change. A road deteriorates a little bit faster than you expect, or a road lasts a little bit longer than you expect. There's room for flexibility in there, but we want to kind of get to that high-level point. Sustainability Action Plan, which Jeff is going to speak to later. That's a project that we received funding on, and we finalized the plan in 2022. Include a pilot project for solar solution on a municipal facility. That's something that we're exploring. It's a part of our commitment to environmental sustainability. And investigate the feasibility of integrating electric vehicles into the city of Canora. Another environmental sustainability play there. So that is focus area number one. Any questions? Okay. Number two was the recreation, oh, no, sorry, tourism, economic growth, and development. So harder for business development plan, which we have spoken a little bit on. Getting, you know, starting the implementation of the Park and Husky and the Muskie and getting detailed design complete, that was sort of the goal that we set for the duration of the plan. Continuously identify and divest city-owned vacant and surplus lands as recommended by the city of Canora Vacant Lands and Growth Strategy. So we actually just ran out of time last week for that portion of Jeff's presentation on land disposition. So we'll get that back into, we'll get that back in front of you at some point here during the orientation process, so you can get a better sense for how we're using that tool, which basically identifies all city-owned land. And so fun fact, nobody owns more land in the city of Canora than the city of Canora. So that's an asset and an opportunity, and so we're trying to make sure that we have a strategy to take advantage of that. Complete the comprehensive review of the city of Canora Official Plan and Zoning Bylaw. Jeff got into that in pretty good detail last week. Review Community Improvement Plan, again, something that we talked on last week. Activate the city of Canora Five-Year Tourism and Economic Development Strategy and initiated and updated the strategy in 2027. Stace is going to speak to that a little bit later. Identify strategic opportunities to extend city infrastructure to lands prioritized for housing and commercial development. So that's one that we are still, you know, sort of dipping our toe in and trying to figure out where those opportunities are. And of course, those opportunities would come to council for some direction at that point. Finalize the tourism destination marketing campaign. Stace could probably get into that a little bit again in his space. And refresh the Northwest Business Center Business Plan. That's another one that's just sort of come up. So again, I know there's, you know, a planning component in there, but it's about making sure that it's clear to everybody what their focus is over the next three to five years. Focus area three, this is the Recreation, Well-Being, and Safety component. Complete Parks and Recreation Master Plan, checked, we finished that one off. Stace will speak to that a little bit later. Undertake a review to create an engaging suite of recreational tourism and cultural programming. I will share that we have recently sent an offer to a candidate for the General Manager of Recreation position. He's accepted, he'll be coming and joining us. And we've really been focused throughout that interview process and program. How can we activate our facilities? How can we take advantage of the fields and outdoor spaces that we have? And how can we collaborate with volunteers and community organizations to continue to enhance our suite of recreational programming? And complete an active transportation plan. That's something that we received grant funding on, and so we're just going to try and work on, you know, walkability, trails, those types of things. Pilot a Daletail Ambassador's Program, we've talked a little bit about that. I don't know, do you want to speak with organization really quick to that? No, sorry, no pressure.
Yeah, no, sure. So the Downtown Ambassador Program was really piloted off of the biz programs that you see in Winnipeg, Kelowna, and a couple other major centers. The idea was to want to address the visibility, the concerns about visibility of, you know, friendly faces where people can get assistance or support, was to enhance services by having city eyes and ears as they're walking throughout our core center area to say, you know, oh, here, this is looking a little dirty, you know, can you send a crew over here? Or there's an issue over here. And to make that connection with our OPP in a meaningful way to support people who are sheltering in the streets if there's, you know, a need that has to happen. So we did go out and we recruited, we started recruiting for that role. We received no applications. We received a lot of feedback around this role is dangerous, you know, however we want to manage this. And so we really learned that the communication element and how we were advancing and really supporting that role, we needed to revisit that. So we wanted to launch that again this year with, you know, more of a focus on communication and the importance of the role in the rollo. But we also wanted to take time to, you know, make sure that we were collaborating with this group to better understand as well how we could further this initiative or this focus area of the strategic plan.
And so I'd say stay tuned on that. We're going to have some more conversations at budget time. But the idea, sort of that team in the downtown to try and advance some of our priorities with regards to community safety, well-being, and unification.
I could just add a bit to that. I think I actually brought this idea to Adam Smith years ago. Thunder Bay was doing it, the partners in Thunder Bay are doing it. And we had a discussion about it. Yeah, I think there's lots of room for more discussion. And as you said, Robert, I think we need to attract, you know, perhaps college-age students that are maybe involved in, you know, police foundations or criminal law, that type of things, sociology. They have to have a certain, possess a certain level of, you know, confidence and skills to be successful. And I think that's what was part of the success in Thunder Bay. Of course, a bigger community with college and university there, but I think there's certainly room for potential to have this be an effective part of our, you know, a key component to community safety.
Absolutely. Yeah, the criteria too was a component we wanted to communicate. A lot of people thought it was targeted at high school. It wasn't. It was university and college-age social work, you know.
Yeah, so that was a criteria.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Just was in community, like you said, broke down.
Yeah.
Counselor Van Valen.
Is there any redundancy in the city having this program in addition to MAAQUA?
Well, they were all, it was supposed to work together with all the partners. So when we started talking about the idea, we actually met with MAAQUA Patrol, OPP, Downtown, Herbert Town Biz Group. We had connected with a number of KDSB, a number of our partners. Because you're right, we do not want duplication of service. We wanted to understand where the gaps were. And so the gaps were identified in terms of that connectivity between the groups that we were not there to provide, you know, the social services side. We were not there to provide the policing side. But we are there to enhance city service and to offer services to our businesses and to our residents that are, or visitors that are here. So that was really the element that was identified that not one of those teams had in their bucket. But the idea was that we would still continue to have met throughout the program to further enhance and refine those partnerships and how we integrated with each other.
Okay, thanks for the question. And thanks, Robert, for digging into that a little bit more. Next one was to develop a community safety and well-being plan. So that is a provisional requirement. We're not going to get into this today. We do have a plan that's in draft form, but obviously, you know, new committee, new council, we need to sit down and take some time, probably around budget time as well. And, you know, we need to have some conversations as a group about the direction that we want to take that. So we do have a foundation to build on, but we understand there might be some changes. So rather than get something locked in, we wanted to take the time, and we will. Update Canora's Emergency Management Plan. We have been through a number of emergencies certainly since I've been here. And we've seen where there's opportunities just to improve the plan and update with best practices. And so we want to take the time to do that. And then develop a fire department master plan, which we anticipate completing in early 2023. So that's another checkbox that will be too short. Next one, focus area four. So this is the Service Delivery Organizational Capacity Component. So you see, we do have a number of ones here. So develop and implement levels of service. And so I want to talk about levels of service a little bit. And we've talked about this a little bit around Coney Island, Flipbridge. So the city provides a level of service to Coney Island during the winter months where they can, people can get back and forth by foot. Another example of level of service is we will cut the grass in the parks when it gets, it could be six inches, it could be, or, you know, or every two weeks. That's a level of service. We've talked about snow removal and the minimum maintenance standards. We will, okay, here's a good example. Not every community does sidewalks. We do sidewalks, we plow sidewalks, snow, so that is the level of service that we provide. So the thing about levels of service, A, you know, especially you've got people that have started new with the organization, you've been around, you've got people that have been around a long time. What the level of service is can sometimes, without, you know, clear definition, can sometimes not be clear. So we really want to try and make sure that we clearly articulate in writing what the expectations are. And so that can be a real tool for council when people are coming to you and they're saying, hey, I expect the city to do this. And you can say, hey, that's actually not a service that the city provides, or that's something we've chosen not to do, or hey, that's an interesting idea. But we would have to bring that to council and have a conversation. So when we talk about level of service, that is something that is firmly in the council's bucket. So when it comes to taking a service away, or adding a new service, or delivering a service more regularly, or better, or, you know, reducing a service level, those are things that firmly fall in council's bucket. And so there's an administrative process that we need to go through to get those sort of articulated, and then we would bring them to council for approval. And again, I really take, expectation management is really important, right? And I always tell this story, you know, I wake up one morning and I look on Pinterest and I'm going to make these Cookie Monster cupcakes with my daughters, and they look amazing, right? They're on Pinterest. My final cupcake doesn't quite look the same, right? So it's about managing expectations. And so if we, we want to make sure that people have a realistic expectation about what service that they're getting. So if we're going to say we're providing the Cookie Monster cupcake, we better deliver that Cookie Monster cupcake, right? It's just, you know, kind of a playful example, but that's really what we're talking about is managing expectations and providing council with the tools and administration with the tools to be able to clearly articulate what our levels of service are. Undertake a customer's experience review. Employ technology to enhance customer experience. Evaluate existing city workforce using data to support work planning. And establish and implement an online citizen FIPAP process. Consistent through a number of these is using data and evidence to support our decision-making, to make sure we're making good decisions and for the right reasons. Create a people management strategy. That's a Create a people management strategy. That's an internal HR strategy focused on our employees. Complete a review of employee compensation and benefits for non-union staff. Refresh and align the City of Canora employee feedback and development process and system. Enhance employee learning and development by incorporating online and blended learning platforms. Grow and enhance collaborative relationships with our community leaders, unions, and association partners. Implement an automated file management and workflow system. That is a fancy, fancy phrase for records management. Complete a long-range financial plan and update the city's communication strategy. So you've heard a couple of those things so far during the orientation, particularly around communications and particularly around people management. And we'll go to the final area, which is relationships with our treaty three partners. And so I've received a number of questions on this. And so specifically, I want to be really clear. The four things that we've included here were all, all stemmed from conversations that we've had with our treaty partners. So we didn't come up with an idea in a back room and put it into the plan. These are all stemmed from conversations. So develop a strategy with a focus on advancing reconciliation, inclusion, and relationships. Enhance understanding and awareness of truth and reconciliation. And we've actually taken steps to do that since the implementation of the September 30th holiday. We have had truth and reconciliation education events on September 30th, and 21, and 22. And we do that through other means as well. Collaborate with treaty partners to create joint communication and engagement protocols. We do a lot of engagement, in case you haven't noticed, with some of the plans. And what we've heard loud and clear from our treaty three partners, you know, and I don't have a problem saying this, you know, we want to sit down and have a conversation with you face-to-face or, you know, one-on-one. We don't want to be on a Zoom call with 40 other agencies, right? So we have tried to, we heard loud and clear that there are sort of rules of engagement to interacting with our treaty partners. And so we said, okay, can we work on clarifying those together so we have a clear sense for what, again, what are the expectations of one another when the city is coming and looking to hear your perspective on an issue that's important to all of us. So that is something that is ongoing, that we are still working towards. And finally, advance the Tunnel Island Common Ground Initiative. So that's just, I think everybody's familiar with that. Any questions around Tunnel Island? So again, I just really want to underscore that this is all based on feedback that we received. So when we talk about implementation, I want to say first, so I'm not sure how you feel sort of hearing all those action items, but one of the things that we talked about a lot was we want to deliver on all these things for council and for members of the public. And so if, you know, when this plan lapses, if we haven't delivered on something, we better have a very good reason why. You know, because there was a pandemic, or because, you know, something happened, or something prevented us from being able to achieve our goal in the timeline that we initially set. So there's about 36 or 37, I can't remember, action items. Okay? 36 or 37 promises that we sort of created. And so we've tried to break those up in such a way that nobody on senior leadership or nobody in the organization is carrying a disproportionate weight. So, you know, Stace might be expected to deliver on one or two things a year. You know, Ryan in finance might be expected to deliver on one or two things a year. So we've tried to manage that. Now, of course, there are some things in there that require all of us to collaborate on or require a little bit more focus, for example, on JAP and Development Services, because you see, we have a real strong focus on that area in the strap plan. But that's sort of how we, we've tried to cut it up into, you know, the whole, you can't eat an elephant all at once. We've tried to break it into bite-sized chunks. So then over a five-and-a-half-year period, we can deliver on all these things for you and for members of the public. And so the following activities are, we are working towards to ensure that the plan is implemented. Departmental work plans, that's something that we were just getting ready to kick off, and then the floods happened. And so what we decided to do from a departmental work planning perspective is we are going to, well, I'll take a step back. So I've shared this with you, but I'll reiterate. We are working with a third-party firm called Blueprint out of Winnipeg. And so they are going to work with this council on joint priority setting. So I just had a meeting with them recently. They are putting together some homework and engagement for council that you guys will get around the middle of December. You'll be able to provide your feedback around the strap plan. So the things that are really important to us are, you know, what about the strap plan do you really like? What do you see that really resonates for you, that really resonates with what you heard on the campaign trail? What is maybe not reflected in the strap plan that you heard on the campaign trail that you think does need to be reflected? And what ideas are important to you individually as counselors and collectively as a council that you would like to see us focus on? Because the strap plan is a really important thing, but we do have things that we do and goals and things that we want to achieve that fall inside the strap plan as well, you know, and that's the pyramid, the budget and the work planning and the other plans that we have with all sorts of goals and things that we want to achieve. So that departmental work's planning, we are going to wait until council has sort of come back and says, these are the priorities that we have over the next week. And then that will allow us to structure the departmental work planning to be most successful. So a little bit of a lag there, but I think it's important that we get it right. And because of the timing, we really wanted to incorporate your goals and ambition in there. Annual reporting. We'll report back to you every year on the things that we were able to knock off. Regular administrative council reports. So you'll see when you get into your first council meeting as reports come forward. There's a section on each report that talks about how that particular item contributes to our goals of the strap plan. And so as you start to see those come forward, that'll become clear. Alignment with other city plans, policies, and strategies. We're not trying to work at cross purposes. So if we say that we're going to do something in economic development and tourism, or the Parks and Rec Master Plan, that is feeding into the overarching goals that we have here to the strategic plan. Internal and external partnerships, of course, and then ongoing reviews of the plan. And so that's what we talk about, joint priority setting for this new council. That's an example of an ongoing review of a plan. A plan is not, the strap plan is not a rotisserie chicken, you know, just put it in the oven and leave it and come back in four years. You have to keep an eye on it. And you want to make sure that it's still reflecting the goals and the ambition of the organization. So that is the implementation piece that I think. That brings us to the end. I appreciate council's patience in going through that, but I think that's the best way to set the stage for the day. Because this is really the overarching document that everything else falls on. So I would open it up to questions from, from council with regards to the strap plan or with regards to the process that we're going to take to set priorities jointly in the new year.
So when you talk about bringing in a third party to talk about items or strategies and that, is it in relation to this document for implementing? Or is it part of the discussion that we still have to have as a result of a previous election? Because I think some items, I think there was a lot of items that came up, and I think everybody can speak to their own experiences that maybe aren't a focus in the strap plan. That should be a focus in the community now.
So that's really exactly what it's all about. Of course, you know, when you, anytime you do a strategic plan, this is why it's important that it's organic and it's living, right? Anytime you do a strategic plan, it's a snapshot of what was going on in the community at that time. So a lot of the engagement that we did was actually in 2021, and then the plan was passed in early 22. So we recognize, Mayor Correa, that there's things that have come up over that time, and there's also things that are important to you, again, individually as counselors and collectively as a council. You may look at some things on the strap plan and you may say, you know what? We don't need to put as much focus there over the next four years. Here are the things that we actually really want to put some more focus towards. And the thing that I think is important and why I'm bringing in a third party is this group, the senior leadership team group, has lived and breathed and ripped up, you know, a document to shreds and built it back up and gone through all the typos and spelling. And we've lived that thing and breathed it for a year and a half, two years. So rather than have us facilitate a process whereby you guys are trying to come up with your priorities, we want to give that to a neutral party. And they have no skin in the game, and they don't bring the same preconceptions that we do about the things that we were hearing throughout that process. And so it should be just an opportunity for senior leadership to sit back and listen and have that third party engage with you. And you guys can provide clear feedback about, you know, maybe everything in the strap plan still is important to you, and we're just going to add some things in. Or maybe, like I said, there might be some things that you want to maybe, you know, dim the focus on over the next four years, because we can maybe take a little bit more time there. So that's really what it's about. It's about this council setting their priorities over the next four years and trying to bring to bear what was important to you when you were campaigning and what you heard on the campaign trail. And, you know, there's things that are going to come up over the four years too that become important to you or become important to members of the public. So it's really just about trying to live in that the document's not stale. It's not stagnant. It's not, you know, we gotta, we gotta keep it reflective of what's going on, you know, in the present, so.
Just a supplementary, so when's this occurring? Because I think, I think, and I think I speak for all the council on that, we're looking forward to sort of getting into committee meetings next week. And not that this isn't important, but just hit the ground running and start talking about what we heard on the because everybody has a story to tell around this table about what they encountered on the campaign trail. And some will collide and others will be different, but we need to begin that process sooner than later about setting what we think are priorities also.
Yeah, so I feel council's desire to really dig in on that. One, we understand that you guys are taking in a lot of information right now. And so we try to, you know, when we talk about some of the other things that are still common, facility tours, this process, we didn't want to inundate you too much at once. There was also some constraints around the consultant's ability to deliver this before Christmas. So we needed a little bit of extra time, but I have had that conversation and I've said, look, this council, they're ready to go. They want to sit down and they want to prioritize. So I said, how could we, how could we, you know, it might be a little bit of a longer process, but how can we kick off that process so that you feel like you're being able to start that process as early as? And so they're putting together material right now that we're going to share with you as soon as we have it. And they're also going to do some individual conversations with you so they can hear from you directly. And they're putting a process together, and by the time you guys come back after Christmas, we'll really be able to sit down and start having those conversations as a group. So that's the timeline that we're currently working on. So I know it might not be quite as aggressive as we're hoping for today, November 29th, but we're trying to at least start the process so that you guys feel that you're coming to those priorities together. And I'm just a little constrained from a consultant management standpoint, because they committed to a variety of work in December. And again, I thought it was important to bring in a neutral third party to lead this process. Because it's important that you guys have a blank slate with which to work on it and just have those conversations. And have somebody facilitate that isn't bringing the experience of drafting this draft plan that we currently have to the forefront. That was something that I felt strongly about. So I hope that's helpful. I know, I hear you that council wants to move in. We're trying to facilitate that as quickly as possible.
Yeah, I just think it's important in December though, that I'd like to hear, because I never had the opportunity like to meet collectively with council. I've talked to individuals on, you know, on the side about what they heard and what their priorities are. It'd be nice to have that conversation, I think, as a, collectively as a council group in December in one of our meetings. Just to get the pulse of what, I mean, as I say, some are common, but there's, I think everybody has a little bit of something different, because we heard different things in the campaign depending on where we went. And some of them are identified here, but I think they're, I think some council would like to see some expansion of some of these items here. And it's just what we heard in the campaign. And I would like to have that conversation in December. Carve out a bit of time to have all of council have that discussion. And then that can prep us for a consult, a third party coming in or what have you. But I think it's important that we begin to have that conversation. That would be my Christmas present to myself and to the community is to have, you know, and can I say to my wife that we have that conversation and?
It's a great point.
She's away right now, so she's not listening.
It's a great point. It's important to remember too that this is an evolution, you know, we all brought, we all brought our individual perspectives to that process when we started going through it. And then you start hearing other people's perspective in the organization, and you're like, oh, that's interesting. So by having, you know, we'll find a way to facilitate a conversation in December. And by having that conversation, when you come back and you meet with the third party, you'll have an opportunity to hear each other's viewpoints. And, you know, it might inform your thinking a little bit. So this is a process and it's an evolution. It's something we'll be working on over four years, but we will, you know, we'll try and deliver on that. We will deliver on that in December and give you guys an opportunity to start that conversation. And I do apologize that it is, we are lagging a little bit, but we were trying not to overwhelm you in these first few weeks. But I hear everybody is ready, rip and learn.
Yeah, I just had a, maybe you can answer this question. Just a little focus area five, relations with treaty three partners. I think this is really important. I know we'll be discussing it more, more in the future, but the city's hiring an indigenous relations officer. Is that the correct term? How does that fit into this? And was this, was this position identified as, at the same time this focus area was identified? And maybe you could just, do they complement each other, or how do they complement each other? Maybe you could just elaborate on that.
So it was actually identified a little bit earlier. It was actually winter of 2021, and we had some ongoing conversations with treaty three at that time. This was actually a direct request from treaty three. And so we were thinking about that and having conversations with council, because it was important to us that if we were going to go that route, that we, that we had a foundation for success. And so we had a number of conversations, and we had conversations with our treaty partners and really tried, and also looked at other organizations, like Thunder Bay has a very thriving indigenous relations process. You know, they started with one person and now they have three or four people. And so we were able to glean a lot of information from there. We worked with them on job description. We worked with them on, we're going to interview over the next two weeks, and we're worried if you want to jump in or not.
Yeah, I think this has been a really good opportunity to collaborate. I know Heather, myself, and Kyle have been involved as we've gone through. We just more recently have been working with, again, our treaty partners around interview questions. So we're continuing to, you know, engage so that we're gathering the right skills. We are assessing in the right way, and we're making our selection efforts to ensure that this individual is able to meet the needs and really reflects what the community needs and what the city needs.
Now that you brought that up, when you, when you go through the process, though, are you including someone from the surround, like from an organization?
During the interview process?
Yeah, tied in with the indigenous. And the only reason I say that is because I know I was privy to a lot, the whole process through the Canora District Service Board. And they, because the question was asked several times, and they thought it was a great service and a benefit to have whoever it would be in that. And they may be able to help you with it. I mean, it's not easy because you're looking at a broad community. But they did have people involved, and I think it made the process work a little bit, a little bit better as you went through the recruitment process. So just food for thought, something to look at. I think it's important.
We are, we are getting close to advancing that process. As a general rule, I don't like to put added staff into the strap plan. But we knew that the position was coming, and we had the approval from council when we were doing the strap plan. So we, it was important to us that we could deliver on those things. And we felt with that added resource that we could deliver on the four action items that we've identified. So that came out about actually a little bit sooner. And it just, it's taken us some time to really try and make sure that we can do it by months. I hope that answers your question, Counselor.
Yeah, I just want to say, and again, back to the, this is very important. And I think we, it's just from my perspective, I guess, is we really need to, it's easy to virtue signal about these things, but we really need to get down to brass tacks and come up with some tangible things we can do with our First Nation partners. You know, I've been involved in many initiatives and enjoy working with and respect working with our First Nation partners, but I think they want to see something tangible come out of this. So I'm committed to that, and I think that's, that's always in the back of my mind when I look, like, this is a focus area, so it's a priority. We put it on paper, that's a priority. So let's not just talk about it. Let's, let's have something come out of here that we really can hang our hats on and, you know, work towards. I know, you know, for our priorities, for community safety is a joint priority. And I think we can really work on those initiatives. Who do you, who's your contact at Grand Council Treaty Three? Like you mentioned Treaty Three.
We have a variety of people we have.
Yeah, yeah, it all depends on where, what we're, what we're looking for. So I know Hillary, I don't have the exact names. Hillary's been connecting with some of their, their office or coordinator staff to help gather the questions. The right individuals for the right thing that we're looking for. So it does, it does change. Just important to note, I know Kyle had mentioned the people's strategy earlier. That connects also here, because we have to remember that diversity in our workforce is also very important to ensuring that the way in which we deliver our services is reflective of the needs of the community. The City of Canora has not done an equity survey. That's something that we're looking to roll out. But we are, we're excited to see really the demographics in our workforce. Uh, that's something that we're looking to roll out, but we are, um, we're excited to see really, uh, the demographics in our, our workforce. We believe that we're actually quite representative. Uh, and so it'll be, you know, important to start to, uh, be able to report on that. And as people come to get services, they are serviced and receiving support, uh, from people they identify with. So I think that that will be another critical way of not only just delivering on the internal organizational side, but also supporting these types of relationships and initiatives.
As a verification, Councilor Matt.
Could you be a little bit more explicit of what that position exactly is going to do?
Yeah, so it is a liaison type of a position. Again, as we're developing services, looking at planning, we want to have a lens uh, on all elements of the way in which we do business from communications to, you know, uh, our regular, how you interact with the city. Um, so it really is about creating that lens, bringing in and making, making sure that we have the right connections, facilitating those connections, understanding, uh, the needs of our, our treaty partners and looking at building those relationships. And it's really helping, uh, us be able to say, hey, if we don't, if we're not thinking about it or it's not, you know, coming easily, that person is there to say, hey, whoa, we need to think about, uh, you know, this new perspective. So it really is about awareness, education and ensuring that we are thinking about that and we are regularly making our services.
And I could certainly share the posting with you so you can get a better sense of what the duties are, if that's helpful. Uh, any other questions? Okay. Thank you for your patience. And yeah, so everybody has a copy of the strap plan and, uh, I hope that was helpful. Don't go, where we're going to go next? Who wants to take the next one?
Well, Community Services is on the next one.
Mark for me, yes?
Hopefully it works.
Yes, yeah, my mom does that. Um, Safeway Hill across from one half, one to your side is still a one.
Something to, I've never seen.
Maybe someone put it. Oh, cause I just noticed when I was coming back from the fight, it's well, there's, it's like right across from like the, or close to one half. This is on the other side of the road. There's a tall. Always on it. Okay, okay.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, can we, uh, get back to the meeting and that and just, uh, everybody remembering that, that we're live streaming right now. So, and will be for the remainder of the meeting. Thank you.
Morning, everyone. Uh, thank you very much. Um, so I'm going to walk you through two decks today. Uh, the first deck, we're going to walk through the growth and recovery portion of my presentation, which is then going to lead into the community services portion. And then after that, I'm going to do a separate deck on the master, uh, uh, rec, uh, plan. And, um, yeah, we're going to go through all of that today. So, um, just, uh, picking up where Kyle left off, uh, these are the elements within the, uh, growth and recovery section directly related in our strap plan to, uh, growth and recovery. Uh, he read through those items, but you can see by the green stars, those are the items that fall specifically to my area. Kyle mentioned on his final slide about the importance of, uh, aligning with other strategies. So, you know, again, he's mentioned a pyramid. You gotta think of the strap plan as sitting right at the top of that pyramid. Okay. And then after that, you're going to have a other bunch of guiding documents, one of which is the five-year economic development, uh, strategy and tourism strategy. And then beneath that, you're going to have operating plans and that sort of thing. So this is an excerpt directly from the five-year economic development tourism strategy. It is loaded on SharePoint so that you can have a look at it. It's not my intent to read every word on it today, but just to give you some highlights to some things that were identified under that plan. So there's three major goals. One is tourism, tourism development. One is economic development. And then there's tourism and economic, uh, foundations. And within that, there's objectives. Okay. And then underneath the objectives are tactics in terms of how we should be achieving those objectives. So we want to enhance our four-season visitor experience. We want to support Canora's development as a destination for arts, culture and heritage. We want to improve lake access using boating infrastructure. We want to advance Canora's position as a host community event for special events under economic development. We want to activate development on Canora's vacant and underutilized lands. And we want to support the growth and retention of local business and emerging, emerging sectors. And then finally, some of the, uh, foundational pieces are, are indigenous partnerships, which was just talked about. Um, undertake planning activities that support tourism, economic development objectives overall. And then develop and invest in strategic infrastructure that supports economic development tourism. That's more related to the harbor front redevelopment, other major projects that we might be doing. Now, when we go a layer deeper within the, uh, five-year economic development tourism plan, you'll see there's actually specific tactics and underneath those tactics are specific actions. Uh, first tactic is to establish centralized business hub and resource center, support local business. So this is talking about the Northwest Business Center. And this is actually completed. Uh, you will recall that, or you may recall that, uh, uh, the business center was located on Second Street. Uh, they've now relocated into the Bannister Center. They're, uh, located there with the innovation, uh, uh, group there with the BDC and then the Northwestern Business Center. You've got Logic, Logic on the second page. There's an accounting office there. There's a letters office there. So we've actually gone through this and I, if you haven't been there, I encourage you to go have a look. They just did the ribbon cutting a month ago or so, or so ago. In terms of, um, economic development, uh, you're going to hear, uh, when we go into the capital planning, uh, process for 2023 and investment attraction project. So, uh, when you look at this one particular tactic, uh, you know, position Canora to take advantage of specific strategic sector opportunities. There's a number of things that we need to do as an organization to close the gap in terms of, uh, being able to market ourselves as a best of class opportunity for various developments. So there's a number of different items that we're going to be working towards and we're going to roll those all up into a investment attraction project. In terms of keys to success from my perspective, as it relates to economic development, uh, investors and developers, uh, user experience has to be white glove. Uh, that, and it needs to separate Canora from other opportunities. Uh, we're one municipality, many municipalities. All of them, all municipalities have a vested interest in trying to attract, uh, new developments. We want to separate ourselves. We want to be best of class. Uh, we're going to, and we have, uh, spoke to developers to understand what it is that they want to see. What kind of language, what kind of information, what kind of images, what they want the process to be. So we're going to use all that to model the way that we operate as a business going forward from a, a growth and development perspective. Uh, we're going to communicate proactively and not reactively, uh, and use the appropriate medium, uh, for the circumstance at that particular time. I really, uh, there's a time to send an email. There's a time to jump on a plane and, uh, I, I've, we're, we're not as proactive as we need to be in this space. Uh, we need to have a clear path from start to finish and that's for all types of developments. So this is something that Jeff and I have spoken about. Uh, no matter what kind of developer you are, we as the city should be able to lay out a roadmap and says, you are here, you want to get here. Here's the various steps along the way. Here's what each step entails, who's responsible for those steps. There's the approximate timelines with those steps. Cause I've heard before in the past where things come back to council and they say, well, you know, uh, staff is not moving things along. Only to find out when you do dig a little deeper, that actually that file is in the hands of the developer at that time. So I want to have very clear expectations on both sides with everything perfectly wrote back. So steps, timelines, I spoke a little about this. I think that we have to be very open and transparent and, and partner in the success of the developers. Uh, and you know, that's not only talking about what's good, but also where the challenges are and then, uh, be solution based for that. Uh, we need to increase the volume and type of investment ready developers. Um, again, I, when I met with you individually, we talked about, uh, we hear common names all the time. We need more, um, top quality, uh, developers in, in our market. Uh, we need to change, challenge the know people. Uh, we need to be solution based. So if there's something that we can't do, we, we ought to say no, but here's a way to get, uh, what you want done. We need to be strategic and tactical. We need to be assertive and at times aggressive to move things forward as quickly as possible. From a business center standpoint, who they are and what they do, well, uh, they're a resource center. Okay. It's very important for, for starting entrepreneurs and existing entrepreneurs to have a place where they can go to, to get information to support them in the next step of their journey. So we have a whole bunch of, uh, business planning resources. There's an extensive amount of market research there and there's all sorts of information on financing and business structures. And they will bring in the BDC or they will bring WOBIC in, or maybe a financial lender, depending on what the circumstances are in the particular business. Uh, it's a great opportunity for people to network, uh, and, and just listen and connect. I've, uh, in my career, I've spent, uh, what is it now? Six years with the Business Development Bank. Uh, so entrepreneurs need support mechanisms. They, you know, they put their heart and their soul in their business and sometimes they need somebody to go to in the business center that provides that source and also one, uh, one-to-one consultation. Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
Who are your staff there?
Uh, it is Alison and Corinne. Alison Velli?
Yeah.
And Corinne Cable.
Okay. Uh, next, Councilor Matt.
Oh, sure.
I've never heard anything but good about the Northwest Business Center. We send lots of people there from Greg's office and they come back and they're just thrilled with the service they're getting there.
Yeah, that's wonderful feedback. Thank you very much. Um, on an annual basis, council's wanting to get an update uh, from the business center in terms of what they've accomplished. I am, I'm rapid firing here. Uh, when you sit there and you, uh, get to hear the number of touches, uh, that take place and in the areas that, you know, businesses need that level of support, it's absolutely amazing the work is done. So thank you very much for that feedback. Uh, here's some of the highlights that, uh, happened in 2022. Um, there's been, uh, eight, 5,000 grants awarded to startup company, company plus. And there's going to be an additional three occurring in this month. So these are startups that are taking place or they're, you know, early stage. Uh, they're trying to grow their business. They need some working capital, uh, and, uh, these monies go a long way too. So, uh, to support them. So, you know, um, a entrepreneur would present their plan. Uh, the plan would be carefully vetted. They would be evaluated against other people that might be competing for these grants. Then the grant is awarded and then if there's a mentoring component to make sure that everything is being done in terms of what was said that was being done. Uh, there's additional five, uh, $5,000 grants, uh, within the indigenous string for entrepreneurs. Um, this is a, a really impressive one for a lot of small businesses. They don't have the finances to get a digital start. So website or any sort, sort of other thing that they're going to be doing in the digital space. So this is a $2,500 grant that gets them started in that space. And there's been, um, uh, 15 organizations that have taken advantage of that funding this year. Uh, there's been two, uh, youth, uh, companies that have started up through summer company. Uh, so that typically, uh, actually it's my wife that teaches the entrepreneurship program at Beaver Bray. So when they're, uh, when they're doing the entrepreneurship program, part of the things that they'll do is they'll do a business plan. And then they'll go to Toronto and do the make it pitch competition. And some of them actually go and they actually start their businesses, solicitors and some funding to start their business. Uh, we work with the Women's Entrepreneur Network and also the Innovation Center, uh, to just talk about best practices, opportunities, uh, things that might help stimulate the growth in the community. And then, um, I talked about the grant opening. So we've assisted, uh, over 31 companies financially, uh, 2022. Um, last time we met, uh, there was a discussion, uh, very briefly about the social channels that we use, uh, to, um, network our various, uh, economic development activities. So, uh, this is a, a list. I will, uh, be loading this, uh, presentation later today. Uh, but it talks about, you know, not only what we use as a medium, uh, but, uh, where our target audience is and what sort of things that we're doing across the social channels. So you'll see some for the Northwest Business Center. Uh, there's the Avatar Program. It's actually a biz program, but it's actually managed in-house by the Northwest Business Center. It just talks about things that might be going on in the community, uh, like the shop, uh, holiday campaign and that sort of thing. And then there's the public agenda.
Uh, Councilor.
So you identify tourism and, and culture as one of your pillars? So you need to tourism and culture?
Yeah. So this is just the economic development portion. So when we get into our tourism, yeah, we're gonna yeah, yeah, we're gonna start pulling these things together. Yeah. I'm just getting you into this growth and recovery role and it's driving two fences right now. So it's early 2000s. Moving to tourism now, uh, if, again, when you go through the economic development and, uh, tourism five-year strategy, there's a number of art objectives that were identified. Enhance four-season visitor experience. Enhance its position as a host, uh, community for special events. Support Canora's development as a destination for arts, culture and heritage. And, and improve lake access. And here's, um, some of the things that we're going to be doing, uh, to, to help, uh, do that. Um, we're going to work with economic development to try to get additional holes. From a tourism perspective, we really have a challenge, particularly in the winter months, uh, with all the contractors and hotel rooms. Uh, we're capped in terms of the number of sporting events that we can have because there's just no hotel, hotel capacity right now. We do need to develop winter attraction strategy. So when you're going to start to see some more detailed with map tax, you're going to see how we're, uh, putting together, uh, some money that we're allocating specifically for, uh, attraction. Um, some of these events, I'll use the still event, which could be like a four-day event. Uh, it's a, it's a branded, um, uh, event. Uh, these, these events tend to be costly. If we could do one every couple of years, that would be a good day for us. And it, it costs money to, to attract these events. Um, um, we need to work up with our partners to enhance shoulder season events. A perfect example is, uh, the lighting that's going up at the quarter, uh, Canora Nordic and Biathlon Club. Mount Evergreen's doing a lot of work in terms of advancing their service delivery and the muses is key. I believe in the shoulder season and winter season to, um, to promote arts and culture. Um, and, uh, because they have a lot of great programming going on through those months, uh, that is an attraction. Uh, we need to work with operators to bundle content and this leads to the next comment, which is about, uh, the relationship with Destination Ontario and Destination Northern Ontario and Sooneros, Nestor Falls. Um, Josh and I went and had a, a day, uh, with these groups. Um, going to Canora for three days, going to Sooneros, Nestor Falls for a couple of days. There's a lot of different things that each community offers that if we pull together, we can offer, you know, a more robust set of tourism type opportunities. And I think of, uh, you know, the European market or, or other markets where they want to come. They're not coming for tour three days. They want to experience all sorts of things. They might want to go sled dog racing in, in Vermillion Bay, or they might want to go and have, you know, see pictographs down in Sooneros, Nestor Falls. There's all sorts of things that if we pull together, uh, we're, we're all going to be stronger. Um, and activate through supportive special events and festivals. Here's just an example from the five-year economic development tourism strategy specifically as it relates to enhancing the four-season visitor experience. It lists a number of things that we're supposed to be doing, a lot of it in the marketing space. I have done a, my next step in my, uh, presentation is to go through the marketing project that we've just gone through to help to, uh, develop a tourism destination brand. Our starting point in 2019, when I started here, this was our, our tourism brand, North America's premier boating destination was our tagline. It wasn't the, uh, tagline, uh, brand, uh, resonated with, uh, with previous council. It wasn't 12 months a year. Not everyone has access to a boat. As a brand, it's financially starved, uh, and uh, could never be achieved when you're competing with markets like Vancouver and Miami and Toronto, uh, for, uh, for boating destinations. We just could never be that. So the first thing that we did when we did our, our, our major project is we did a, uh, for the first time ever, we did a tourism, uh, study. So we, we filtered out the seasonal residents. We filtered out the residents and we tried to figure out, uh, why people come to Canora. So here's a snapshot of the, um, of the visitor profile. It talks about the number of days that, uh, people stay on average. Uh, how big, uh, the group is that's traveling, if Canora is the final destination or not. Uh, how they travel with the group, if they plan on returning, how many times they've been here before and when they tend to come. So, you know, summer, we're, summer sells. So, you know, summer, summer sells itself all day long. We need to do a better job in the fall, winter, and spring. Just so you know, this is data that we plan on sharing with the local businesses as well, so they can help, you know, have this information to help them maybe shape the way that they're dealing with businesses or with customer story. Here's an important one for me is the likelihood of returning. You can see, it really doesn't matter so much what the age group is. There is a large percentage of people that visit Canora, the club are coming back. And that's the bottom section. And particularly when you combine the very likely with the likely, you see that we've got a very strong captivated audience of people that are returning to us on a regular basis. Go ahead.
How was that developed?
How was that developed? Yeah, we actually did, we went with wave marketing, it was a successful performance on that. They were set up at Madyoski's Farmers Market to actually stop people on the street, and then they had online surveys gathered that information. I will be actually update or upload this whole report. This is just about five or six pages from that report, there's a lot of very valuable information in that. Here's an interesting one for me is why people come here. Highest one is eating and shopping. So, you know, I think that people tend to think about the outdoor activities, but really, a lot of it is indoor. So that just speaks to the experience that people have when they go to the restaurants. And I think I mentioned to some of you, you'll see here, Museum and Arts Center is actually the 13th item why people come here. And that just, I think, it helps really separate Canora as a small municipality in terms of attractions and just how strong our arts and culture is in Canora. In terms of how people spend their money, this is a distribution of how people spend their money when they do come to Canora. Obviously, lodging would be very costly, or it costs them, the dining and so on through the process in terms of how people would spend their average spend here. We also wanted to find out where people were coming from, and you say, well, why? Well, when you're doing your marketing spend, you want to invest in those markets where you have a higher likelihood of getting a return on your investment. So here's a distribution of gender, age, household income, number of children, and really where they came from. You can see 78% inside of the dome is really within about two hours of Canora.
So I have real concern over the way businesses have closed in the last three years. And I'm wondering what kind of outreach your department is doing to see what the reasons are.
We've, we did a survey of the local businesses when COVID was taking, going on, finding what people needed then. We actually created a COVID recovery plan at that point in time. So that's when you had the open streets and had the open markets and that sort of thing in Main Street. We haven't done anything since that time. Again, getting into the new year, I think that's something that we want to go back to, to find out that information, because it's critical information to share.
Can you also upload that data if you have some concern?
Yeah, 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 and I will actually, I will upload that report as well. I don't know how, I wasn't in the room at the time, so I don't know how that information was captured, but I'll see what we have.
And might have had our conversations about how the bar priorities.
Yeah, no, thank you, that makes perfect sense, I'll take that one away. So in marketing, it's, there's something that you always strive to achieve when you do a bunch of market research, and that's to develop personas, what's called a persona. And through the data that we gathered, and again, you're gonna see each of these three areas really fleshed out in much more detail. There are three specific personas, so three specific groups that come to Canora ask tourists to do certain things. One group is called the trip planner, so they are, you know, they tend to be a little bit older, they tend to take a little bit more time planning their trip than other groups. Then there's the activity seekers, and then there's the adventure seekers. So when we go forward and we market, we're actually going to be using language, we're going to be using images, we're going to be using social mediums and collateral material that really connect with each of these groups. Because then they're going to be more likely to be attracted to Canora and then come and spend time with Canora. So again, when you, when you get a chance to look at the market research that was done, you're gonna see a whole bunch of stuff after these three categories, but this is what you always try to do when you're doing market research. So this led to the new brand, and this is what the new brand is. It's Canora, each letter tells its own story, and it talks about the lake, it talks about our unique architecture jobs, the night skies, the festivals, and various other activities that we have going on, the boarding force and our indigenous connection and our indigenous partners. And so that's the new brand. From that, and I don't know if you had an opportunity yet, we developed a new website, visitcanora.ca. Each of those personas come for different reasons. This is just a screenshot of a scrolling image, so they want to come and see the events, the festivals, they want to eat and drink, they want to stay, of course. And there's all these other things that scroll along where people can click in and see, you know, what would be of interest to them, so they can start to plan their trip. And then we have this section, which is a fun section, which we can control, but, you know, people want to engage. And this was, I actually pulled this yesterday, so you can actually see how people are actually starting to look at their shots. So this is kind of how active this site is, and, you know, as we change the seasons, people are starting to post pictures. We do have the opportunity to vet the photos before they actually get posted to the website, but this is just another section, which, you know, is, it keeps all the content fresh for people coming to look. We do have several key partnerships as it relates to tourism. We have the Canora Hospitality Alliance, and, you know, they are the collectors of the MAPTAX. They receive funding from us, it costs them $144,000 a year. And both Canora Tourism and Canora Hospitality Alliance have invested interest in maximizing the number of room nights. That way their owners can be profitable. More recently, we've done a lot of work with Soon Arrows Nestor Falls, and we were meeting with them tomorrow for breakfast, actually, we talked about best practices, what's going in a lot of their market, what's going in our market, what we can do together to, you know, bundle content and just get more people coming to our area. We continue to work with Destination Ontario and Destination Northern Ontario. We're gonna walk you through why that relationship is so important to us. The meeting that we had with them just recently was fantastic. They were quite impressed with the city's decision to dedicate resources to both the recovery. They haven't seen that in other municipalities, but they see that as something that's necessary going forward. Science North is a very important partner from a tourism perspective. They bring highly engaging content to Canora and the Discovery Center, both in traveling and permanent exhibits. And they're currently looking to do an expansion of the Discovery Center. And I talked about Destination Ontario, Northern Ontario. Yes, councilor?
Go ahead. Does anybody come to Canora to fish anymore? I just, like in your top reasons, it's like eating. And we've got this great big KBI going on here, and we're sitting on Lake of the Woods, and I just noticed in the pictures you showed there, people holding up fish, but it's not identified in priority. I just, is that, and you mentioned, Councilor Moncrief asked the question about where you did your surveys? Madyoski's Farmers Market, is that primarily where it was?
That was one of the locations. Again, they were going up and down Main Street and other second street and stopping people and going through interviews that way as well.
Because I, you know, from my experience, the guys that do this KBI aren't going to be at Madyoski's Farmers Market. I guess my question is, is it a, I guess the question is, do people come here to fish anymore? And is it a market that, you know, that we could tap into? Have you tapped into it? Maybe it's, I'm totally naive.
Were you talking to the right guy?
It just popped out to me there, so.
Fishing, fishing is a part of our local and regional economy. One of the things that I, the way I like to think of it is, and don't take this the wrong way, people don't come to Canora to fish, okay? People come to the region to fish, and they'll fish Lake of the Woods, and they'll fish the surrounding lakes. That's why a partnership with Soon Arrows and Nestor Falls is an important one, because what's good for Soon Arrows Nestor Falls is good for Canora. And they'll stay at the resorts within the region. Canora then is the service center that services the fishing industry, if you will, fishing and hunting industry. Has it changed over the years? Yes, it's not the economy that it was 20, 30 years ago. There's a lot more family fishing now than there was in the past, as opposed to maybe the, you know, the good old boys going out to the lodge and booking in for a week and having their annual fishing vacation. It's still a very, very important part of the local and regional economy. However, it has changed over the years. But again, just to reiterate, do people come to Canora to fish? No, they come to Lake of the Woods and the surrounding area to fish. Canora is the beneficiary of all of these tourists that come to the area, because Canora is really the service center that services. I mean, if you look at the Canadian Tire sports section, I'd say, or a number of the other sporting goods stores in the community, they have a pretty good selection of fishing and hunting equipment in there. And that's to serve, again, the local and regional economy when it comes to fishing. So that just clarifies it a little bit. And it's still, it is still very strong. In the spring, and it changes from year to year. I happen to live along Highway 71, and I can generally anecdotally get a sense of how things are going in any year by looking at the number of trucks that are hauling boats and motors up Highway 71. It's still a pretty busy highway in the spring. Are they going to Canora, the city of Canora? No. But they're gonna, but they're going to end up there for supplies, you know, fishing supplies and all that stuff. So still a very important part of our economy.
Good, yeah, thanks for that explanation. I wasn't saying that you missed that, I was just curious as to, wonder how that was captured in the overall, you know, your survey and overall plan, but that's, thanks for the explanation, makes perfect sense.
Yeah, we talked about locations and where we got data from. We actually went to the hotels as well and asked them to sort of do surveys with some of their guests. The nice thing about this is we now have a baseline. You know, is the data perfect? No, it's not perfect, but it's directionally. It gives us a lot of information that we didn't have before. You know, the whole idea is every couple of years is to go back, you know, go at different times of the year and that sort of kind of thing, and try to get more information, so that again, it can help shape the way that we market and help understand why people come here. Talked about the relationship with Destination Ontario, Northern Ontario. Here's, here's, here's a great example of how, with a small contribution from the city, $5,000, Soon Arrows Nestor Falls also made a contribution to this campaign. Destination Northern Ontario and Destination Ontario invested $520,000 in a marketing campaign. So we are able to lever this broader marketing machine and get a lot of visibility in very specific markets. So this is a partnership that's very, very important to us. And this talks about the mediums, what we try to speak to, and it did generate a lot of activity. They had a whole bunch of key metrics that they were looking at in terms of success. And Soon Arrows Nestor Falls and Canora did better for the number of views, the amount of time people were spending with the pages, and we just did really well in this space.
And Bob, look at that target market, USA, especially Minneapolis and Wisconsin. You know what that market is for.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
That's the pitch element.
Your question?
Go ahead, sure.
What is Destination, is it a membership organization, is it a provincial organization, what is it?
It's the largest regional tourism organization.
So it's a membership firm?
Yes.
Are we a member?
Are we a member? I don't know if we're an actual spending member, but we're part, we're at the table. I don't, yeah, they, of course, through COVID, their membership went way down, but now it's starting to come back up again, and they're thinking of creating ways to enhance their membership as well. Okay, so going into community services now, who are we? Well, we're Parks and Facilities. I don't know what's going on.
They're putting in the HVAC.
Oh.
So they're low here, next door, I told them there was a meeting, but they were gonna try to keep it down, sorry.
There's recreation, there's the muse, which includes the Lake of the Woods Museum and also the Douglas Family Art Center, and then there's the libraries. In terms of strategic plan, here's some items that are identified within that strategic plan. I am going to be doing a separate presentation on Parks and Master Rec Plan. The muse completed a strap plan in 2021, it's a three-year plan, and it's been loaded in Sherwood, so you can have a look at it. The library is in the process of completing the strategic plan, and I talked about the master rec plan. So Parks and Facilities, I would have spoken to some of you about this during our speed dating, but there's eight large parks in form of beaches, there's four trails, there's 300 areas requiring grass maintenance, we have over 200 docking slips at 12 locations, 17 public washrooms, eight ball divots, we clean up around downtown in the White Cap. There's 40 dock dispensers, there are 40 leases, we have a 37-acre cemetery that we maintain. We have 75 buildings that we look after, and there's a lot of, as you can imagine, capital projects and maintenance projects in that space, and we process over 1,000 work tickets annually. There are 10 full-time, 16 students, and two managers that operate that area.
So the 200 dock strips in 12 locations, there's several loaves of water in the river, several lakes included in the historical limits, are all of those on Lake of the Woods?
All of these docks, there is one set of docks that's on the river. So if you go in the way.
So just Winnipeg River and Lake of the Woods?
That's correct.
Counselor Bernie? I still have a question, is there any way that, I'm just looking at your, you know, all the work that you're doing and you're full-time and summer students, is there any way that you could work a restorative justice component into this? I know years ago, I think it was the Pines down at the Harbertown Center, Jeremy Ambler, his direct accountability program at the courthouse had a connection with the Harbertown Center Committee, John Saunders.
Yeah.
And who you started as Buck, and there was a relationship where people through the direct accountability, restorative justice could go down there to do a work component? Is there any possibility for this type of a connection?
Yeah, I'll just quickly with the Parks and then I'll hand it over to Robert. So, you know, the Pines Agreement, which, you know, flux brigade and then became the Pines, that, the end of 2021, they said they didn't want to be in that business any longer. So we took it over for the first time as it relates to White Cap and that crew where that restorative justice ours would have been coming out. You know, so we went through that transition, we've been at it for, you know, 11 months now, and, you know, in terms of the potential for that going forward, I think maybe I'll turn over to Robert.
Sure, yeah, we're very interested in being part of that solution and being able to provide those hours. We've been working together with LEAP, with a couple of other agencies, and actually had some good conversation with some community groups around, you know, talk to us, like when there is somebody who you do need, whether it's hours for community services or hours as a co-op or hours as, you know, just experiential work readiness type of work, we're happy to use them as auxiliary or supporting staff and to really feed them into gaining some experience within the city.
So there's potential for the link with the justice system?
Absolutely, yeah.
Good.
Yeah, I think with the creation of the Labor Helper, which, you know, again, you can speak to that in terms of, you know, non-grade 12, non-driver's license, it opens those sorts of doors where we wouldn't have been able to before.
We've really been monitoring the unemployment rates and, you know, what is the persona of, you know, are people who are unemployed and what are some of the barriers? And so we've been looking at how some of the qualifications in our own work are barriers to people advancing. And so that's, that's part of these programs, right? You know, if you can get a foot in the door, whether it is through experience or through work placements, then, you know, maybe you see yourself actually being able to do this work, and if we can gain you, have gainful employment and benefits and all those things start to kick in, your life improves.
Well, it's civic engagement, I mean, you look at the windows smashed in Market Square, the vandalism that's happened in our community, I mean, it's, you're exactly right, it's civic engagement, and I think that's a component, again, it's not our sole responsibility, but it would really, it would really, you know, our stature would really be improved as far as going. our stature would really be improved as far as going an extra mile to support these community safety initiatives. And Mayor Poirier talked about getting wins here. I think it's, it's something that we can do, and in my experience, it's very, very important. It may seem insignificant, but you take one person that can create some skills, get some self-confidence, give back to the community, suddenly that, maybe that person was responsible for, you know, 50, 100, 100 calls for service in the last 18 months.
Yeah.
They're taken out of the mix. It's, it's got a huge win. It's got a huge ripple effect.
Yeah.
So I think it's, I think it's an important component, and I'm glad that we're, we're looking at possibly fostering that partnership.
And one, one individual who participated in our Labor Helper said, you know, I can go home and I can see the work that I did in the community. Like, that's huge. So absolutely, we need to broaden our network to make sure that we're considered for those places.
Great, thank you.
In terms of our recreation department, well, our recreation department brings program to the community. We do it through a number of different venues that we have here. I've just done a few snippets of, some pictures of the Rex Center. It's worth telling to this council, through COVID, there was a lot of concerns expressed about the size of the fitness center. And short of doing a, you know, multimillion-dollar expansion to the building, which was not practical, we took a room that was not utilized very often. We made that the stretch room, and we were actually able to tear down a wall between the fitness center and what was the stretching room, and we expanded the capacity by like 25% for, you know, I think it was around $60,000 or $70,000. We've done what we could, and, you know, we're in the process of ordering a bunch of new equipment there because that equipment now is 17, 18 years old, I believe already. That walks you through at the bottom the number of staff that we use to operate our various recreational facilities. Just a few more pictures. A picture of Kuwaiton, we do swimming lessons at Coney and also at Garell, and then pictures of the baseball grounds at the Rex Center. Community Services was really hit hard by COVID. In the Master Rec Plan, there's a lot of data that speaks to visits for any number of recreational activities year over year, and you can really see, you know, how hard certain areas were hit, and some of them have come back, but some of them still don't come back. So in some cases, we saw reductions of 50% in our numbers. The, all community services areas are subsidized by council. They have various rates. Pool might be one rate versus hockey or ice surfaces is a different rate. So when you don't have that foot traffic, it, you know, it puts a lot of pressure. Fortunately, we were able to get a couple of rounds of COVID funding through the province to help reduce that sting, but our goal is to get the numbers back to where they were. I have numbers for 2022. When you see them, it's important to just recognize that we were actually closed for the month of January. So as we start to normalize back to our 2019 numbers, just keep in mind that the next report you're going to see is actually 11 of 12 months and not 12 of 12 months.
The non-resident fees that people pay to use municipal facilities, do they equal the amount that residents pay?
We do not charge a separate rate for non-residents. We have looked at it over the years a number of different times, but it's never been implemented successfully.
So what do they pay?
They pay what locals pay. So coming out of COVID, of course, the whole thing is saying that we're open to business, trying to bring people back. Hockey academies have started back, and that was a really good filler for daytime ice rental revenue. The hockey academy at the level that they were pre-COVID, they just haven't come back. So we continue to work on those relationships, but that's, that's a reality. You know, goal is to introduce new programming, and Kyle mentioned earlier with the new GM coming on, we're really looking to that person to activate. And we have done a lot of work in the, in the rate space. Rates are something that we should be looking at at an annual basis to make sure that we're, you know, trying to have a reasonable level of subsidy going on. You can't not increase rates for a couple of years and then introduce a large rate increase. So it's important that we do this on an annual basis, so what you, what you'll see now is that we will have done rate increases for one or two or three years, so it's just sort of already built in. I'm going to talk about this in my next presentation. So just a couple of things on the Muse. Tourism study illustrated how important Muse is as the 13th highest attraction for tourists. The Douglas Family Art Center opened in the fall of 2019. It was difficult because they opened, and then COVID happened a couple of months later, so they're really just this year starting to get their feet under them. It's interesting to look at the volume of people coming through the doors. The, the Art Center does very, very well in terms of the number of people that are coming through. So it's not a one-to-one ratio. You think that people go to the museum, they go to the Art Center. It's not the case. Art Center actually is rating at a higher volume. It is a tremendous asset, not only for residents but our visitors. And one of the things that we started doing was, from a community services standpoint, PD Day is a perfect example, okay? You've got all this programming going on in the Rex Center for a PD Day. The library's got all this programming going on, and the Muse has all this programming going on, so, you know, and it's, let's just say, a young family, they've got their kids, they're going to the pool for the date, but they're looking for a full date. So what can we do to sort of spread the word in terms of the other activities? So we did things for the first time ever where we, we brought all the marketing together so that when you came into the Rex Center, you would see that the Muse and the library had something going on. And we did a scavenger hunt where we had some, you know, some little prizes for the kids that if they went and they went to the different locations, that they could win a prize, so. Things like that in terms of particularly the shoulder in winter season. And from my perspective, if you have an active community, that's where people want to come as visitors. So it's really important to have that active literacy in the community. The libraries, they were hit very strong by COVID. They started a COVID, sorry, a curbside program, and if you look at the numbers that they achieved during COVID, they did really, really well. So it was, you know, people would just order up their books, they would go through a process of cleaning the books and everything, and they actually had very, very high volume. I mentioned earlier that they're working to complete the strategic plan. The libraries do operate under a separate legislation. I did put a really good article in the orientation sessions for council that speaks to the importance of the legislation and how it impacts, you know, the way they operate. It's good information for council. And then just for those of you that don't know, in Kuwaiton, there's a senior center actually that operates in the back of the library, and they're there a couple of days a week.
Counselor Moncrief?
Can we have numbers, annual numbers from those facilities?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we've, oh, listen.
Can we have them?
Yeah, yeah, I'll get them to you. You'll, you'll see two things that you're going to start to see, is you're going to see quarterly reports that are coming to you, and in those, of course, for community services, they're very metrics-driven, so there's a lot of activity, the volumes and that sort of thing. And, you know, particularly, my baseline is always 2019, is how we're tracking to get back to 2019 numbers.
Any other questions? Stace, if you don't mind, I think we're just going to take a five-minute break.
Sounds great.
Yeah.
I'm happy to.
I didn't think you'd argue with that.
No, no, thank you.
I think everybody needs to get up and stretch.